Your email.
Folks, members of the public, in case you are either on Zoom or listening to us on YouTube, the Lee County ZBA is made up of five members. Three are a quorum. We have two in the hearing room, and the third called that he is on his way. So he indicated he'd be here in about 20 minutes. So the delay is waiting for a quorum. Thanks. Be patient. Thank you. Are we ready? Good evening. I would like to call to order the Tuesday, November 1, 2022, Lee County Zoning Board. Would you call the roll, please? I'll call the roll. What's that?
Alice can do that.
You can call it.
Bruce Forrester.
Here.
Craig Burrow, not present. Mike Pratt, not present. Glenn Hughes.
Here.
Rex Meyer.
Here.
Okay. We don't have any approval yet. Not yet. So we don't have an approval of previous minutes yet. So we're going on with the continued petition. No, those are continued to December under old business. And our new petition is petition number 22-P-1598. Petitioner is Crawford One Solar LLC. Permanent parcel number 18-08-12-200-012. In South Dixon Township, the petitioner is requesting a special use for the construction of a solar energy system. Okay. So. What's that?
I'll announce it.
You'll do the next one?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. So I open the public hearing as to the beginning tonight. Summit Ridge, Crawford Solar One and Crawford Solar One LLC amended petition 22-P-1598 and 1599 to construct and operate solar energy systems here in Lee County. First, however, under our own rules of procedure, this body is authorized to engage the services of an independently contracted facilitator to provide us a process and conduct these three proceedings. I will now entertain a motion to engage Judge Tim Slaven as our facilitator for the evidentiary public comment, fact finding, and recommendations phase of the hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. I now turn conduct of the hearing over to our facilitator, Judge Slaven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Lee County ZBA. Welcome and good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is healthy and remaining safe. My name is Tim Slaven. As indicated, I'm a retired circuit judge engaged as an independent contractor to what is called facilitate this hearing. I have no adjudicatory responsibilities. I am not for or against any particular position. I am a neutral. I am here, hopefully, to add some process, organization, efficiency, and flow to these proceedings. This is indeed Crawford One LLC and Crawford One A LLC's petitions, Lee County number 22-P-1598 and 22-P-1599, for special use permits to develop a proposed solar energy system. You may hear it referred to by its acronym SES in South Dixon Township here in Lee County. As shown by certificates of publication, notice of this hearing was published in the Dixon Telegraph on September 17, 2022. The same notices were sent as statutorily required by United States Certified First Class Post to owners whose properties would adjoin the proposed project and additionally all those who own property, whose owned property boundary would be within 1,000 feet of any portion of either proposed SES. First of all, hoping you understand, a portion of what remains of tonight's Zoning Board of Appeals session will probably be taken up by organizational matters as we set some ground rules and do some preliminary scheduling. Initially, as opposed to some of the previous hearings over the last couple years, there are no longer any mandated COVID-related masking or social distancing requirements. That does not mean any of us should not be sensitive to possible risks to and fears of our friends, neighbors, and fellow attendees. As such, I simply encourage all to wear a mask, maintain distances when practical, and certainly be respectful of others' desires to do so. I hope this all makes everyone feel medically comfortable. If not, one can also participate from your home, business, or other remote location on the Zoom videoconferencing platform, or while not being able to participate, one can watch and listen to us on YouTube. The Zoom meeting ID is 915-3923-9154, and the password is 209840. That meeting ID and the password will remain the same throughout this hearing. The Zoom platform allows an interested party to actually participate. It is interactive. One may not only see and hear what is taking place, but when the appropriate stage comes, one may ask a witness questions, call a witness, testify oneself, or give a closing comment. Further, in an attempt to be as transparent and inclusive as possible, we are also streaming this proceeding on YouTube. However, YouTube is not an interactive platform. On it, one can only watch and hear what is being done and said during the hearing, but not participate in it. As to YouTube on your computer or cell phone, use your browser. Go to www.youtube.com. In the search bar, type Lee County IL, I-L short for Illinois, Zoning Board of Appeals. There's no need to be concerned with upper or lowercase letters. That should bring up a list of Lee County ZBA Youtubes. You can input and select the date. Presumably, you want to watch and listen to us on 11/1/22. Select that, and voila, you should be seeing us here in the hearing room. However, please be advised that this YouTube feed will, because of those cyberspace things, have a short real-time delay. In case you're not a techno geek, for assistance with any of these things, you may call Ms. Duffy's technical assistance hotline, 815-973-3449. Now, for bit of substance, there are two general groups of attendees as this Zoning Board of Appeals hearing moves forward. One bunch I refer to as necessaries. These are people who must, as a practical matter, attend this hearing in person. They consist of your hard-working, practically volunteer zoning of appeals members. Your fine zoning officer, zoning and planning officer, Ms. Duffy. Her alternative energy coordinator, equally accomplished, Alice. Your adroit state's attorney, Charlie Boonstra. At any given time, of course, a witness. Myself. And finally, hardly least, our hard-working and skilled court reporter, Callie. The other folks, oh, I forgot, and we have the presence of Lee County IT Jonathan, who helps us with all these things, YouTube and displays and Zoom. The other folks, I will group into what I refer to as interested parties. These are those of you folks who are either with us in building or remotely on Zoom or YouTube because you simply want to observe your county government at work, or beyond that, you have a particular interest in these proceedings. The next process I will try to explain is the process for these interested parties to participate. I emphasize, please, please, know that everyone will have that opportunity for everyone's benefit. And I want to provide that opportunity to participate in a manner that is as orderly and as efficient as possible. There are many possible reasons for an interested party's appearance this evening or and during subsequent sessions, whether in person or remotely. You could be just a member of the public who is joining us simply as a citizen and spectator. You could be a member of the public who wants to be heard. This does not necessarily mean someone who is absolutely for or against the request of special uses, but someone who wants to participate. If you are such a person, you will fall into any one or more of the three subcategories. One, you want to give testimony. This means that you desire under oath to have you or a witness of your calling to testify to facts relevant to the board's eventual decision. Such is not the time to describe your feelings or announce your opinion, but to aver facts. And you are subject to cross-examination. Everyone so wishing to testify will be given one opportunity to do so. Two, you want to be able to cross-examine witnesses, but please, that is just the time to ask questions of a particular witness, not to argue with him or her. Everyone so wishing to cross-examine will be given one opportunity to cross-examine each and every witness. The third reason, you may want to make a closing statement or public comment. That is your opportunity to give a speech, to tell the board how you feel or give them your opinion, based on the facts adduced during the whole hearing process as to what their decision should be. During this closing statement or speech or public comment stage, one cannot allege new facts. When you think about it, the reason for that is simple. The two most important parts of adducing the truth of matters at a hearing are missing at that point. One is not under oath, nor is one subject to cross-examination. Everyone so wishing to give a closing statement will be given one opportunity to do so. For those of you joining us on Zoom, the Zoom platform, this evening or in the future, that interactive software allows an interested party to indicate a desire when the time comes to ask questions of a witness, to present one's own witnesses, to testify oneself, or to give a closing statement or make a public comment. So when I indicate the time has come to begin one of those interested party stages, I will ask for participation from the Zoomers. If one is videoconferencing, one simply clicks on the icon at the bottom center of the Zoom screen labeled Participants, and from the options that then appear, click Raise Hand. We should see your raised hand here on our end. If one is remotely teleconferencing, in other words, not using video, while remaining connected, one hits the star or asterisk symbol and then the Arabic numeral number nine on your phone. We should then also see any raised hands under that option as well. However, I won't be able to call on folks on a first-raised, first-come basis, so calling on raised hands will probably be randomly referring to the name, the email address. the email address, or the last four digits of a phone number that appears on our display here in the hearing room. Also, written communications sent in advance of this hearing or any written material intended as something for the board to consider is subject to Board Rule Article 5, Section 12, that eight copies be provided. Any communications received that do not comply with this requirement will not be considered by the board. I will now review the chronological progress of the hearing. I know that the narration that follows is really boring and tedious, but please, reciting is for everyone, to help you feel comfortable and not worry that you will not have a fair and complete opportunity to participate, but, at the same time, to alert you when the three distinct opportunity forms of participation will present. First of all, the applicant has the burden of initially going forward. Accordingly, its agent or attorney may first make any opening remarks. Then the applicant presents its evidence, one witness or document at a time. I will place each of its witnesses under oath or affirmation. After each applicant witnessed, the state's attorney, the zoning officers, members of the ZBA first, and then interested parties, both onsite and remote, have the opportunity to cross-examine each of those witnesses. And please, I remind you, this is only the time for questions directed to the witness testifying. After the applicant's evidence, the zoning officer has the opportunity to present witnesses and documents. I will place any of her witnesses under oath or affirmation. After direct examination of any zoning officer, first the petitioner, then the state's attorney, members of the ZBA, and then interested parties, both onsite and remote, have the opportunity to cross-examine her witness. And once again, please, that's only the time for questions directed to the witness testifying. After the applicant and zoning officer have presented their respective evidence, then interested parties may present evidence, one witness, including themselves, or document at a time. I will place each such interested party witness under oath or affirmation. After each interested party witness testifies, the applicant, the state's attorney, the zoning officer, members of the ZBA, and other interested parties have the opportunity to cross-examine that individual interested party witness. Finally, the applicant is given the initial opportunity for closing remarks, and then any interested parties will be given an opportunity for closing statements, public comments, or speeches, whichever term you prefer. All of the above is simply a process designed to give all a chance to be heard in a thorough but orderly fashion. There are some sub-rules, after which I promise I will be finished boring you any further. Each session has a time limit under the zoning board's rules of two and one-half hours. However, we certainly don't want to cut off anybody right in the middle of something, so I will certainly make a reasonable effort to let someone finish a particular stage when the time limit has been reached, or, if there is very little time remaining at the end of a stage, I may simply continue the session rather than starting on another stage. I also have, for everyone's benefit, the discretion to call for short recesses. Under the zoning board's rules, I have the duty to rule on the admissibility of evidence. While the strict judicial rules of evidence do not apply, I will exercise some equitable control of what is being presented, with or without an objection. We do and will continue to have, as I mentioned, a court reporter here taking down what is said during the proceedings. I ask all to be mindful of her job. She cannot take down two people talking at once. She cannot take nodding heads or gestures. And while I know she's very skilled, there's a limit to how fast a person can talk, including me, and expect her to keep up. I do ask for civility and decorum. This is certainly a public forum, but please be respectful of all who considered important enough to be here. I ask all to refrain from displays of approval or disapproval, and, as now with all public gatherings, I request that you either turn your cellphones off or at least put them on silent. Lastly, your zoning board of appeals, these fine, hard-working, and practically volunteer gentlemen, act as finders of fact, much akin to a jury. In that role, their decision during the last stage of the proceeding, findings of fact and recommendations are based on the sworn testimony, admitted exhibits, and closing statements they received during the hearing process. They are your friends, neighbors, and fellow citizens of Lee County. So please appreciate and respect their role as we move through the days and weeks ahead. I ask you not to put them in a compromised position by lobbying them or having extra hearing conversations or correspondence until the entire hearing, including their decisions, has been completed. In fact, they've been instructed to avoid these appearances of impropriety by politely telling an interested party something like, "I am sorry, but I'm not allowed to discuss the matter until the ZBA's work of findings of fact and making recommendations has been completed." Thank you all for your kind understanding in all of these regards. All right, let's move into the hearing. Mr. Buchberger, are you ready to proceed on behalf of the petitioners?
I am.
Okay, great. Would you like to make any opening remarks, or you want to launch into your testimony?
Should I stay here?
If you want to make some remarks, you can stay there, that's great. But if you want to testify, come on up.
No, let's get started.
Okay, great. Raise your right hand for me, please. You solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, old truth, anything but the truth. Have a seat, and I'll help you get started a little bit here. And would you state your name and spell your name for the court reporter, please?
Yes, my name is Brent Buchberger. B-R-E-N-T.
I didn't know.
And the last name is B-U-C-H-B-E-R-G-E-R.
And Mr. Buchberger, what is your business or occupation?
I am a project developer with Summit Ridge Energy, representing this evening Crawford 1 Solar LLC and Crawford 1A Solar LLC.
You said project director with what company?
Summit Ridge Energy.
Corporation, LLC, or you don't know?
LLC. For Summit Ridge Energy.
And you are here on behalf of Crawford 1 and 1A LLC, is that correct?
Yes, Crawford 1 Solar LLC and Crawford 1A Solar LLC.
Thank you. And who owns Crawford 1 Solar LLC and Crawford 1A Solar LLC?
Those project entities are owned by, currently owned by, a development organization that is wholly owned by Summit Ridge Energy.
What's the name of that development?
I have that here. Is S-R-E? Solar Origination 1 LLC.
Solar Origination LLC, right?
And S-R-E Solar Origination 1 LLC is wholly owned by Summit Ridge Energy.
Okay, thank you. All right, just in quick, general terms, what are your duties as project developer?
So I'll explain this later in my presentation, but Summit Ridge Energy is a owner-operator of community solar projects. And as owner-operator, one of our primary responsibilities is bringing financing to these projects, to construct them, and then, obviously, own, operate, and maintain them long-term.
Can you keep the mic in front of you? I know it's hard to do, but you're not used to it, and I understand, but...
No problem. And so my role as a project developer at Summit Ridge Energy is really to ensure that these projects, when they achieve, you know, as we move them through the construction milestones, are financeable. That's really what it comes down to as a project developer, right? So at this stage in the process, it's putting in place the base entitlements for there to exist, a solar project, and, you know, a special use permit, and ensuring, you know, the land use has been reviewed and approved, and also ensuring that there are no, there's no ambiguity in the requirements for that land use to exist. That's my role.
Okay, very good. I'm sure you have probably a plan for presenting how you believe Crawford 1 and Crawford 1A, I'll refer to them in shorthand terms, fit the ordinance scheme of Lee County. Why don't you go ahead, and I'm sure there'll be questions afterwards, but we'll take it one step at a time.
And so should I start my presentation?
You can do it, yep.
Okay. And I guess I should have included this in my opening remarks, but I did want to thank everyone for their time this evening, members of the board, Judge Slavin, our county zoning administrators, all those involved this evening and supporting this evening, members of the public, and everyone for their time. I know how busy everyone's schedules is. I can appreciate that, and I appreciate everyone's time and engagement in the process. So if we can go to slide, the next slide, my presentation, and just by way of...
Do you have a hard copies of that presentation? Printouts of the PowerPoint?
I do not.
Okay. Would you please get those at some point?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, because a record can't reflect what's being displayed without that as an exhibit, but go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I've provided a PDF copy, but I know that's not a hard copy.
Public can't see a PDF copy, so...
Yes, understood. I can follow it with hard copies. So just by way of a brief introduction for Summit Ridge Energy, so we are a Virginia-based company with an office here in Illinois that I'm based out of, and we are one of the leading owner-operators for community solar in Illinois and beyond, really in the United States right now. So presently, we have approximately 215 megawatts of project, either operational or in development in Illinois. If, we'll go to the next slide. And we, Summit Ridge Energy, is an approved vendor as approved by the Illinois Power Agency to be an owner and operator of community solar projects. And I do really want to stress the fact that we are an owner. We currently have 46 projects in operation across the state representing 110 megawatts in 23 counties. We have 20 projects actively in construction this fall. Those operational projects have already delivered $1.5 million in bill savings via the community solar tariff. And we have, we, again, as owner-operator, are, you know, providing that energy and those bill credits for 25, more than 25,000 residential and small business customers in the state. We have paid more than $500,000 in property tax for these projects, and we've deployed, Summit Ridge as a whole has deployed over $1.5 billion in capital with the Illinois market representing more than half of that to date. So I just want to stress that. I mean, we work closely with developers. Obviously, I'm here tonight acting as a developer for Summit Ridge Energy, as I've explained. We work closely with developers and acquiring projects, but one, just one difference that I wanted to point out is we are the ultimate owner and operator. So I think that carries weight in our ability to attest to how the project's going to be constructed and operated in the long term. And I also want to just point out, I believe you may be familiar with how community solar works in Illinois, but just as a brief refresher, you know, these projects are connected to the distribution grid, in this case, owned and operated by Commonwealth Edison. And the power that is generated by the project is valued at the retail rate of energy supply, and then those credits can be applied to ComEd customer accounts. And so the value that we sell those credits for, that subscription for, is how, A, we make, one of the ways we make money on the projects, and then also, one of the ways we offer, we can offer savings as an energy producer operating in the retail environment in the state of Illinois. And then there's another element that sometimes gets a lot of attention with the Illinois Power Agency, which are the environmental attributes generated by a solar project. And so those credits, renewable energy credits, can either be transferred to the utility, to ComEd, or to a third party. And again, so what is our role in this process? So we self-develop projects. We acquire projects in the market prior to construction. So we would acquire the project, we would perform our diligence and acquire projects, and then take them through construction, and then be the long-term owner and operator. In that role, we are the ones that are actually contracting for and managing the project construction, major equipment procurement, testing, and then the long-term operation of the project. Financially, we act as a project sponsor. Obviously, we have our own capital invested. But then at major milestones, we'll establish joint ventures and bring in investors at a portfolio level. That's kind of one of the ways we create value as well in the industry. And that's also one of the ways we make money, right? I mean, that's frankly, like, so we develop or acquire portfolios of projects, and through those financing milestones, that's one of the ways that we make money as an owner. And then, one of the most important activities that we oversee and are responsible for is managing community solar designees. So these are the third parties that we contract with to manage the subscription side of the community solar project. So we are the, so all those projects I've mentioned, we are the responsible party, right, for those projects. We have third parties acting on our behalf to go, you know, find subscribers for the projects and perform the administrative tasks of associating utility accounts with the project and ensuring that credits are applied correctly. But we are responsible ultimately to the state. And one item I should note is also the consumer, you know, the consumer compliance end of that is ensuring that our marketing efforts and our statements made by those third parties are accurate, right? And so, again, as an owner-operator, we are managing that and also responsible for that for our projects. And then, next slide, please. So tonight, this evening, I'm here to present the petitions for Crawford Solar 1 LLC, Petition 22-P-1598, and the petition for Crawford Solar 1A LLC, Petition Number 22-P-1599. Both of these projects were previously approved by the zoning board of administrators, and the they were recommended for approval by the zoning board, and then ultimately adopted and approved by the county board under ordinance 08-18-016. And so through that process, again, four years ago, the projects that were presented at the time, it was two megawatt community solar projects co-located, they were deemed to be, you know, compatible with, you know, a compatible land use, and, you know, as presented, met the standards of development. And again, so I'm here this evening, you know, seeking review and consideration again for the projects. You know, fast forward four years to today, and now we have, you know, we have constructed projects and have experience developing in 23 counties in Illinois. And I'd like to hopefully demonstrate that this evening, you know, as we re-present and reintroduce the projects for consideration. Next slide, please. So I want to briefly review, you know, our determining, our process for determining a viable or feasible site for solar. There are several factors that we consider. You know, the first being compatibility with local zoning and county code with respect to, is there a way to have the right to develop a solar project in this county or at this location? county or at this location? We're also looking at existing, existing land use and compatibility with existing and proposed developments in the area. You know, obviously, like a comprehensive, you know, we are reviewing comprehensive plans and ensuring that the projects that we propose are compatible with those. It is an energy project. Commune Solar projects connect to the distribution grid, so we are looking for proximity to that infrastructure, in particular, three-phase power and proximity to the nearest distribution-level substations. Equally important is that the, the first few bullet points is landowner interest, right? Finding partners that, you know, we can, they are partners, or I like to say, the most important partner in the entire process is the landowner. They're the ones that, we do enter into lease agreements for our projects, and it is a long-term commitment by both parties, and I like to emphasize the weight of that commitment and ensure that we have an extremely positive, you know, working relationship with our landowner partners. And then there are some basic construction, constructability concerns with respect to solar. The first two we're looking for is the slope of the site and flooding considerations, but we'll also be looking at, you know, the visual impact of the development, you know, if, if there are any glare considerations for the site, you know, if there are environmental constraints based on our diligence, what is the soil character, characteristics, the geotechnical considerations, are there wetland constraints, are there threatened or endangered, endangered species present on the site, are there flood hazards, right, for the, for the site, and are there any archaeological resources present at the location? And I will just note, I do have an image on the screen depicting the general area of the, the two proposed projects, Crawford 1 and Crawford 1A. And I'll note that there is obviously existing electrical infrastructure, there's an existing power plant and two, two substations. I'll just note that those are participating in the wholesale energy market, and a Commune Solar project participates in the retail electric market. So I just wanted to point that out, maybe as a matter of interest, just that there is, I think, existing energy infrastructure near these, where these products have been cited, but that those have been cited there for different reasons, right? They're, they're looking for access to the wholesale market grid, and a Commune Solar project is, you know, needs to have access to distribution, our infrastructure. Next slide, please? And I just wanted to walk through and just, so for the sites that we have, are presenting here, you know, our process is looking, of course, early on to de-risk any, any matters that might, you know, prevent development or, or prevent full use of the site. And so at Summer Ridge, we start by an in-house, we have an internal tool that we've developed that really lines up with our lender requirements. As I mentioned, we are owners and we will be financing the system, so we understand what the finance industry is going to be looking for when they invest in these projects. So really, we start there in terms of our desktop screening. We have an internal tool that captures those, those requirements. We also partner with third parties. We have third-party tools that will scour state and federal databases to review any sort of, you know, basically risks for development. We, after performing a desktop review, we do reach out and consult with state and federal agencies. And then ultimately, we move on to the step of conducting third-party, or engaging third parties to prepare, supporting, you know, due diligence reports on, for environmental aspects and other impact considerations such as glare, a glare study. Next slide, please? And so for the Crawford 1 and Crawford 1A projects, per our, the ECOCAT review, there was no record, or there remains no record of state-listed threatened or endangered species, natural area inventory sites, nature preserves, or registered land and water reserves in the development area. Also, per the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service consultation, the, the development area could have, have the presence of the Indiana bat and northern long-eared bat. However, the project does not propose any tree removal, and therefore, no, no impact is anticipated. Per our Phase 1 environmental site assessment, we have not identified any recognized environmental conditions on this site. And per the Illinois State Historic Preservation Office, there were no archaeological findings of interest, and no further survey is required for this site. So those, and those statements are applicable, the study area for those reports, and those statements are applicable to both the Crawford 1 petition and Crawford 1A petition.
And excuse me for interrupting, but when you refer to that ECOCAT review, you have in your narrative, your application, a copy of that ECOCAT review along with an invoice showing pain, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm sorry for interrupting, but I wanted to cover that.
Next slide, please? So I'd like now to present the Crawford 1 project, and at this juncture, I'd like to admit into evidence an updated layout.
Crawford 1.
For the Crawford 1 project.
And would you pass that out to ZBA member, Ms. Duffy, the court reporter, and Mr. Boonstra?
And should it be, how should it be labeled?
Pet 1. Each one of those marked, Ms. Duffy, or are you going to mark them? Yep. Well, let's wait until, so the ZBA members and Mr. Boonstra can file along? While she's doing that, why don't you do, mark all the number twos? Pet 2. I got it, I got it, thank you. They need a copy of 2, I think.
Okay, I'll, yeah, I'll also just pass them out.
They're exhibits, so they, I want to be able to look at them. And Ms. Duffy, and the court reporter, and Ms. Hinkle, and Mr. Boonstra. I, I have one. Pet 1, pet 2, pet 2. I don't think Kelly has one yet, Mr. Boonstra, there we go, and Kelly. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so first, I'd like to present the Crawford 1 solar project. Crawford 1 Solar LLC is seeking a special use permit for construction of a 2-megawatt AC solar project.
For the record, that's pet number 1.
Along Red Brick, Brick Road in Dixon, Illinois, parcel ID 18-08-12-200-012. And the project as presented here in the updated layout, it remains 2 megawatts. It is key, and that is in keeping with the original project development area, and that is also in keeping with the active interconnection agreement. So the project has an active interconnection agreement, which is sized at 2 megawatts AC. Crawford 1 is presented with approximately 5,064 solar panels, 16 string inverters, one medium voltage step-up transformer, and the...
How many inverters? You're going a little fast for me, but go ahead.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
16 string inverters.
16 string inverters, yep.
One medium voltage transformer. And solar panels would be mounted on a single-axis tracker system mounted on a driven pile foundation.
Mounted on, I just didn't, it's a single-axis tracker, mounted on a what?
A driven pile foundation.
Okay.
And Crawford 1 Solar, as presented, is approximately, the development area for the project is approximately 16 acres of a 150-acre parcel.
Of which one now? What 16, which, which one is 16 acres?
Crawford, Crawford 1 Solar LLC is approximately 16 acres of a 150-acre parcel.
And the parcel number you gave is the whole parcel, right? It isn't...
That's correct.
You're, you're not proposing that you're, that this SES take up the entire parcel that's just on that, within that parcel?
Correct.
Okay.
Sited on that parcel. And Crawford 1 Solar, the development area for that project is approximately 16 acres of the parent parcel.
Okay, go ahead.
And then I'd like to present Crawford 1A on the next slide, and then I'll discuss the changes between the two, the previously submitted layout and the updated layouts. Okay, so Crawford 1A Solar is seeking a special use permit for construction of a 2-megawatt AC solar energy system located on Red Brick Road in Dixon, parcel ID 18-08-12-200-012. The 2-megawatt AC nameplate or system size is also in keeping with the original project development area and system size, and also is in keeping with the active interconnection agreement for this project. And the system as proposed has 5,064 solar panels, 16 string inverters, one medium voltage transformer, and PV modules to be mounted on a single-axis tracker on a driven pile foundation. And again, and this project also has an active interconnection agreement with ComEd for connection to the three-phase circuit along Red Brick Road. I can go to the next slide, please? So I wanted to share here the original layout. This, this is the layout for the Crawford 1 project that was submitted in late August with the special use petition. You can see that the layout for Crawford 1 includes an approximately 1,000-foot-long driveway across the project to a centrally-located equipment pad. And since that August submittal, Summer Ridge Energy has recognized an opportunity to reduce the driveway length for Crawford 1, the Crawford 1 project, and any buried cable runs, any disturbance related with either of those parts of the project, the driveway or the buried cable. And so, and also in keeping with that there are two separate petitions for these co-located projects, if one project was to move forward, if the Crawford 1 project was only to move forward, then we would not propose to construct the driveway across the field and place equipment in the middle of the field. So this is a change as proposed from our application in late August. And if we go to the next slide, this is the new layout. Depicted on the screen is the new layout. This actually depicts both the Crawford 1 and Crawford 1A projects, both side by side. We've made the perimeter boundary of the two projects, co-located Commune Solar projects, is, remains the same as what was submitted in our application under the two petitions. What's happening here is that we have an internal shift in the boundary between the projects, and we also believe this provides a better layout and proposed, again, proposed location of the driveway and of the power conversion equipment if the projects are phased. So if, if, for example, the driveway will only be constructed across the field if the Crawford 1A project is, proceeds.
Is what's shown on the board any, represented by any of your exhibits or any of the submissions with your application?
No, this is just shown for illustrative purposes. We didn't want to, because the projects are required to be submitted independently, we have elected to, or I have elected to only include this in the presentation, which I recognize I need to provide hard copies for as an exhibit. But the, the drawings that have been prepared depict only, only equipment and improvements for the project under each petition, and show the area for the second co-located project, but not the equipment or any details related to that second, to the, to the adjacent co-located project. This, this drawing that's being shared in the presentation right now is, is only provided to, to provide a better overview of how the two projects might interact if both were constructed.
Glenn?
Next slide, please? And with, under the special use, we do, we do have one request for a variance to the solar ordinance. Section D dot 1 dot C of the ordinance requires that power and communication lines running between banks of solar panels shall be buried underground except from the point of interconnection to the existing utility owned in above-ground electrical wires. We are requesting a variance for the use of above-ground, but approximately 2 feet above ground runs between tracker rows. And so what I have depicted in the slide is an example of a very similar layout for a project, where the, the darkened east-west runs represent the location of DC collection, DC cables that would be running from the solar, the tracker rows back to the power conversion equipment, the inverters and the transformer. And then the detail that's provided here, it may be hard to read on the screen, but is, is essentially showing a cable-carrying system that carries those home-run DC wire, that home-run DC wiring approximately 2 feet off the ground... home run DC wiring approximately two feet off the ground below the trackers to those central power conversion stations. The reason, real, reason for this request is that this actually reduces the disturbance on site in that we don't have to perform additional trenching to bury these, these cables. So they, they are running below the trackers. And, and just to maybe take a step back, I mean, the, the DC wiring that connects the strings of modules is already running under the tracker, the, the PV modules are connected together into strings, and that those cables are running above ground to, along the track, along the trackers. This would then keep that, those cables above ground and just have east-west home runs to the power conversion equipment, also mounted below the tracker. So these wouldn't be new, these wouldn't be overhead collection lines, you know, mounted on a 30-foot pole or something similar. And this would be under the array, but, but not buried. Next slide, please. So I want to take a, a brief moment to just to share, you know, what, what solar looks like and sounds like, and sort of walk through, you know, our development standards and the construction and operation, and ultimately the decommissioning of the site. Solar panels themselves are quiet. They, the electric transformers that are used in the construction of these systems, they're small, they're, for this system, it would be a two MVA transformer. This is similar to equipment that's used throughout the electrical distribution system across the state and country. And the equipment for community solar projects, the string inverters themselves, you know, that's all, those are derived from residential and rooftop systems. So the equipment itself is also designed to meet, you know, essentially regular residential applications. I wanted to share here a brief video, if possible. This is from my alma mater, University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign.
Mr. Brook, would you have any idea? How to help them?
Tell them it's just that quiet.
I can actually, I can hear it, but it's actually quite quiet. So I, I'm happy to, I'll just, I guess, describe, I mean, ultimately what you'll hear in this video, and I encourage anyone who's interested to go, you know, review the University of Illinois's website on there. They've got two solar arrays now, this 4.6-megawatt array and a 10-megawatt array on, on campus. They've, but then I think they've made some great informative videos. But in this example, I mean, really what you can hear is, is the wind on the mic and the gravel crunching under the tires as a truck drives through the array. I mean, there's, that's, that's, there's no noise emitted from the system. And the equipment, the equipment that we have, again, at the fence line, we would expect to be about 35 decibels. And, you know, as reference, an average ambient noise in a residential area is 45 decibels, and average ambient noise adjacent to a highway is 80. So we don't expect this to have, at least like, an audible impact on, on the environment. Next slide, please. And these are, these are just a series of some of our recently completed solar projects constructed by Summit Ridge Energy. All of these are comparable to the projects proposed this evening in terms of size and Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And next slide, please. And I wanted to share this, this image, which is a view of a two-megawatt project from approximately 600 feet, to indicate that, you know, the visual impact of the development. And this is, this is presented without any visual screen. Next slide, please. And, and I, I wanted to address the question of, of impact on land value from solar development. I've seen a number of studies through my tenure as a project developer. I think most studies have focused either on large solar projects in rural areas or smaller-scale projects, which I would consider community solar to be a smaller-scale project in, but in denser suburban areas. I would argue that this use is slightly different. This is a smaller-scale project in a, a more rural area. So it's tough to, to, I think, extrapolate or apply like the results of those previous studies on this particular project. But I do believe that this, that the American Society of Farm Managers and Rural Appraisers has done a nice summary of, of a variety of different reports across the country, again, looking at multiple different locales where solar products have been constructed. And I think, and they've determined that basically there's a neutral impact on land value. Any, where they have seen a negative impact, they have basically concluded that that can be mitigated through visual screening. And also that there are positive impacts in other areas where that usually results from higher land rent that solar companies might pay, that, you know, that it's not necessarily a secret. And so that can actually help the land, adjacent land value. And then one is a benefit that I've seen that also has, here in Illinois, is that as these projects are constructed and distribution infrastructure is upgraded related to the project, that can be viewed as a benefit for adjacent properties that might be, have access now to improved three-phase distribution lines. Next slide, please. And, you know, with respect to landscaping and visual screening, you know, the, the panels themselves are relatively low, low-profile. It's, the impact on the, the site is, is minimized through the driven pile foundation, which allows for, you know, use of the area for, under the array. The, the site, as you saw in the pictures that I presented earlier of our existing projects, you know, they'll be fully enclosed by security fencing with a single gate. We do utilize string inverters to minimize the size of cement or concrete equipment pads, again, minimizing the impervious surface or impervious area of the project. And Summit Ridge Energy, we work closely with a licensed landscape architect to design a native prairie pollinator mix for the projects. And we see that as benefiting, you know, the long-term stability of the site through those native grass, and then we have three type, three different types of wildflier species, and early, amid, and late blooming species. Those, the, the root structures of those help, you know, to stabilize the site long And then also that same landscape architect would help us with the final screening, screening buffer for this site. I, I do have a, kind of a screenshot of the northwest corner of the site where we've proposed a 10-foot buffer. This would be of mixed native deciduous and evergreen trees and shrubs. And the intent is for the screen to be beneficial. We don't, we obviously want to address any aesthetic concerns with the project, but we also want to provide additional wildlife habitat. And so that, that's how we approach the design of our screening. And then, yeah, just, just to clarify, the, the prairie pollinator mix is a combination of four different grass species, three early-blooming wildflower species, three mid, and three late-blooming Next slide, please. Access to the site would be via a new field entrance off of Red Brick Road. The, the design of the access would require approval from the Highway Commissioner for, for South Dixon Township. And the, the project, for this, these statements apply to both projects, Crawford One and Crawford Two. The, prior to obtaining building permits, Summit Ridge Energy would fully expect to enter into road use agreements and to review the delivery routes ultimately from I-88 to access these sites. I do know that the bridge to the south over I-88 has a weight limit of 16,000 pounds. Our, you know, deliveries, we would expect to be up to 60,000 pounds, so we would need to work with, again, both the county engineer and the roads commissioner to ensure that we have a satisfactory access route to the site. Next slide, please. With respect to construction, community solar projects typically take approximately 12 months from mobilization to commercial operation. Really, the, the most intensive portion of the construction process really only takes place over approximately three months. The, the heavier construction portion, I would say, that, that's really when we would expect to see the most deliveries of equipment, so the highest, and, and, you know, labor traffic to the site is during those, that three-month period. So traffic, that, traffic would be, overall, in aggregate, would be minimal. It would only be temporary, any impact due to construction traffic, just during that sort of concentrated three-month period for the project. And the most impactful activity with respect to the construction is, is installation of the driven pile foundation, and that typically takes about two weeks. The, these sites, I should note, we, I talked about our site selection process, you know, one of the, the items that we are looking for when we, you know, prefer, perform a screening and try to find a suitable site for solar is one that minimizes grading. So obviously, we're not in the business really of moving dirt, we prefer not to. The solar equipment itself is designed with, you know, slope tolerances. And so what we're trying to do is find sites that we can deploy that equipment on without, you know, changing the natural topography of the land. And so really, we would expect minimal grading. We do develop a balanced site, so that we're not removing any topsoil. Any, any sort of cut-and-fill activities, again, is keeping that topsoil on-site, and it is minimal, because her, our goal is to avoid that, if possible. Our possible construction hours are typically 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM and up to seven days a week. Obviously, we try not to work seven days a week, but again, depending on, on weather and, and other factors, we might be mobilized seven days a week. And then there would be no permanent sewer facilities on-site. Everything would be temporary in support of construction. Next slide, please. And with respect to, again, development within the array, we do expect, and I know that there's growing evidence for this, it's a well, it, it's a field of study, that there's been a lot of collaboration between developers and the university systems across the country in terms of understanding, you know, the conversion from, you know, seasonal row crops to a year-round vegetative cover, and how that can assist or improve drainage patterns across, you know, in the vicinity of a established solar project. So we would fully expect to see that benefit here. Again, our drainage calculations consistently show reduction in stormwater runoff for, for final conditions on our sites. And we would expect that to be the same case here. We do perform a drain tile survey that's standard for Summit Ridge, you know, prior to commencing construction, really prior to even kicking off our engineering and detailed design, as we do perform that survey. And then Summit Ridge has a licensed professional engineer, civil engineer in Illinois, and he manages our stormwater pollution prevention plan. So that would be prepared in accordance with the Illinois EPA. And again, that would be prepared and managed by Summit Ridge Energy. So, so overall, we would expect the erosion and, erosion control and drainage conditions on the site to improve following this development. Next slide, please. We've also performed an FAA screening for the site. The FAA actually has a new tool for obstruction evaluation and airport airspace analysis. What I have depicted here are the outer, the outer perimeter of both Crawford One and Crawford One A solar projects. The, the northeast boundary of Crawford One is 6,150 feet from the Dixon Municipal Airport. It is not on an approach path, though, for that airport. And I believe because of this, that is why the project has passed the- And I believe because of this, that is why the project has passed the screening. And based on the elevations and extensive development area, there's no notice required to be filed with the FAA. However, it is Summer Ridge Energy's standard in our contracts to require our installation contractor to file notice with the FAA once the facility has reached its maximum height. Prior to obtaining a building permit, Summer Ridge Energy, whether required or not under the local ordinance, I know it is here in Lee County, we do encourage and reach out to the local fire chief and work closely to ensure that they understand the development and our proposed access, and also our proposed responses to, to various events, either, you know, a material event with the site or a safety, a personnel safety event at the site. So, we have, we've already incorporated, you know, a 20-foot wide road to allow for emergency vehicles in the site plan. We also provide turnaround points for those vehicles to access, exit the site. And we would provide essentially a knockbox, you know, the, the local fire department would have full access to the site in the event of an emergency. We would also have posted signage at the gate and at every, at every extent, essentially, on, on the, along the perimeter of the site, to ensure that individuals that might be either witnessing an event at the site or, or, or need to contact the authorities in any way have the 911 address, our 24-hour emergency contact number, the name of the project, our, you know, our, of course, the, the owner's, facility owner's name, all the information that would be necessary to, to summon services if needed to the project. I will say in general that the equipment, you know, selected for these projects is extremely robust. Solar modules themselves are one of the only pieces of equipment I'm familiar with that has a 25-year warranty. Those, these, these panels are tested and, and do last, in my experience, at least 25 years. That's, that's their performance rating, right? They're rated for, to provide, to degrade only to 80% of their output in 20 years, or sorry, 25 years. In my experience, as a professional, I, I've experienced modules that are 40 years old that are still operating and, and providing, they may have degraded to 50% of the output, but they're still providing 50% of their nameplate. So the, the equipment is extremely robust. And I should also note, solar panels, per their product safety data sheets, they are non-hazardous. So there's no hazardous material in, in, in the modules themselves. So again, I think this, the equipment itself and then the design of the site takes into consideration public health and safety. Next slide, please. With respect to decommissioning of the site, Summer Ridge Energy enters into removal obligations under three separate agreements. Our land lease with the landowner requires us to remove the system and to establish a financial security to accomplish that. The agricultural impact mitigation agreement, of the more than 40 projects, well, actually, 40 projects operating and then additional 20 under construction, every single project that we have in the state of Illinois, we've entered into agricultural impact mitigation agreements. So we will be beholden to the requirements of those agreements. And then, where required, and I know here in, in Lee County, there would be a process of reviewing the decommissioning plan and receiving sign-off on the financial security to be posted prior to the building permit issuance. And we fully understand and commit to that that financial security has to be the highest estimated cost under those three agreements. We have a dedicated, we actually, Summer Ridge employs a dedicated risk manager to, to manage all of these removal and insurance obligations across our projects. This is an extremely important area of focus for us, and we also fully support that that cost estimate and the associated security should be reviewed and updated every five Next slide, please.
I think, excuse me for interrupting. Now, now's a good time for a break, that's about an hour and a quarter, so let's take 10, pick it up at quarter of. It's probably getting a little zoned out.
Everybody back in place? Okay, let's go. All right, back on the record, you may continue, Mr. Bookbarger.
Thank you. So, this is actually the last slide in my presentation.
Of course.
Thought about saying something, but respect the process.
That was a great, great slide.
So, I wanted to summarize what, you know, some Ridge sees and I've personally seen as the benefits of these solar installations. One, I think that, you know, I'd like to acknowledge that I think the primary benefit to local community is long-term stable tax revenue with little draw on county services. So, you know, the project, we are committed to owning and operating the project. We've made commitments to many parties, including our investors, to maintain this project and keeping it in good standing with a local assessor and treasury is one of those commitments. And so, again, the long-term stable tax revenue that can be counted on is a primary benefit of hosting community solar. We do provide clean and renewable energy, approximately enough to serve 700 residences. One point that I would like to add to this is it's competitive. I mean, is, we in Illinois enjoy a competitive retail electric market and the development of community solar projects adds to that competitive nature where we are competing against other community solar developers, owners and operators to offer the best essentially product for our subscribers. So, additional assets, we are fully subscribed right now for our projects. Additional projects developed by us and by others will continue that competitive nature in the state. When we do develop or utilize a parcel of land for solar, obviously, we are making commitments and there are practical limitations to how long the system will be viable. I've mentioned the 25-year life for the, or at least warranted life for the solar panel. There's typically about a 35-year life for the steel itself when you take into account the corrosion rate. And so, that, at some point, it will become economically infeasible to repower the project. And we also are making commitments to remove it, right? So, and restore the land to its current use. And so, we do believe that upon removal of the system and the, you know, our role as long-term stewards of that portion of the parcel, that the land will be restored or capable of being restored to agricultural use. In the meantime, we think we're, actually, we don't think, I've seen the calculations. I know that we are improving, you know, stormwater runoff in the area and preventing soil erosion within the footprint of, you know, within our controlled footprint and development area. Solar is a quiet, low-impact development. Long-term, you know, beyond, I discussed the short-term construction traffic, but long-term, there's low traffic impacts. We try to minimize our truck rolls. There's a reason why solar can be competitive with retail and wholesale energy rates, and one of that is because it requires very little maintenance. So, there's not expected to be, beyond maintaining our landscaping, there aren't expected to be many annual truck rolls to the site. So, there's low traffic, long-term. It does provide our landowners a diversified revenue stream. As I pointed out here, these are just portions of larger, the projects proposed this evening, Crawford 1 and Crawford 1A represent just a portion of the larger parcels. The balance of those sites, as, you know, as proposed by the landowner, would remain in agricultural use. And then, the last point I have up here in terms of the comment that it supports long-term local grid resiliency, I actually think this one is understated. When we connect a solar project to the distribution grid, we are providing a local generation asset on the same circuit that feeds your house and businesses. Right now, we, as a community solar developer and then as Summit Ridge Energy, the inverters that we propose for these products are what is deemed a smart inverter. We actually receive a rebate from the utility for deploying smart inverter technology on our site. The reason why that's valued is because there will be future value to the grid to have these projects connected. We immediately improve power quality during the day, should specify during the day. But they actually, these inverters do have nighttime capabilities for helping control the power quality on that, on these circuits. And there's also long-term benefits in combination with distribution automation, which is the plan in Illinois. There are benefits to long-term resiliency at the circuit level. So, that's kind of a hyper-local benefit of having the system, is that the system will be connected to a circuit, which is connected to a substation and affords the utility, this is not Summit Ridge that controls this, but we are providing the equipment for the utility in the future to have a more resilient grid in their management of that generation asset. And one short story I'd like to end on is, I've seen this in practice where a project we developed in California came online around the same time as the wildfires. And when the grid was, you know, there were rolling brownouts and blackouts in California, we were actually instructed by the utility to keep our system online because they had safely isolated that circuit. And we were absolutely, we were able to extend the amount of time that residents and businesses could, you know, run their AC, run their refrigerators, you know, whatever they needed. And that was directly being provided by a project similar to this. It was a three-megawatt project. And I think that we'll see more examples of that in the future where projects such as these are able to support and, again, improve resiliency. In the near term, they improve quality, power quality on the grid, and long-term, they provide options for resiliency. So, that's a benefit that I'd like to highlight because I'm excited about it and I think, and we are building that capability into this project.
Finished?
And that's it?
Yep. Questions of this witness? Let's go around the horn, Mr. Boonstra.
No, sir, thank you.
This is Duffy.
Yeah, I have several. On behalf of the applicant, do you agree to be bound by any and all proposal and representation contained within the petition and application and any testimony made under oath during this public hearing?
Yes.
And will you, the applicant, comply with all applicable federal, state and local rules?
Yes.
And will all systems, equipment and structures be 20 feet or less in height?
All solar energy systems will be less than 20 feet in height. The utility poles at the point of interconnection to the grid are typically 30 feet. So, that would be, in this case, Com and Wold Edison's poles. There's typically three to five poles that are required for the util, those are utility-owned poles that would be constructed to support interconnection of the project. And then, there's typically one to two customer poles, and that would, in that case, it would be the project company, Crawford 1, Crawford Solar 1 or Crawford Solar 1A. That's really one, that's really for a, to act as a demarcation to the public grid and also a riser pole. In this case, we are required to bury cables underground, power and communication cables. So, that transition from underground to overhead typically occurs at a riser pole. So, three to five poles, depending on utility requirements, would be, would exceed the 20-foot height limitation.
Have you provided any details in the application related to fencing for the project such as the planned location, height and fencing material of all fencing for this project in the application?
Yes, we have provided the location and I believe described the fence. We've described it as a minimum six-foot fence. We are, standard is a seven-foot chain link fence with no security or razor wire at the top.
Will the fencing contain appropriate warning signs and warning sign, and a warning that's according to the OSHA regulations?
Yes, our fence would include the 911 address, our 24-hour emergency telephone number and, you know, site identifying information and anything else required per the OSHA standard.
And does the applicant intend to maintain the fence so as to prevent the growth of woody vegetation or noxious weeds along the fence?
Yes, our leased area with the landowner extends beyond the fence perimeter in all directions. And the purpose of that is to provide access, real estate rights to provide, for access to the perimeter of the fence to maintain it. So, we can typically access the fence either from inside the array or outside the perimeter fence as required for maintenance.
Will security cameras be anywhere on site, either temporary or permanent?
No, we never anticipate requiring security cameras. That's not part of our standard process for maintaining the site either temporarily or long-term. I will say, the only reason why we would temporarily deploy security cameras on site is if there was an event during construction, a theft or something that prompted us to, to address that through monitoring.
Are you proposing any lighting at the site?
No, we do not have any permanent lighting in our standard design for either the array or at our power conversion station, which is where we would have the inverters located. So, any lighting would be temporary in nature.
So, if there was lighting, it should be utilized, it will be shielded and downcast?
Yes.
Will there be any glare associated with this project?
We did perform a glare study for the project at multiple heights, both at a sort of standard passenger vehicle or occupant of a first story of a house. So, I think, I believe it was at five feet. And then, we also performed a glare study at the height too, that would assume either a second story or operator of a commercial vehicle. And so, I think we've got glare evaluated at five feet, nine feet and 16 feet, if I recall correctly from the application. The, there was no, the results of the glare study passed all screening per the FAA standard, which is what the screen was conducted in accordance with. I will note that if you review the study, there are two types of glare identified. There's green and yellow. The, there is a temp, there is temporary glare demonstrated in the study, I believe, at the nine-foot height along I-88, directly south of the project. It's well below the FAA standards, which is why it passes the screening. It's also characterized as green glare, which is not, yellow glare is what gives you an after, an afterimage, right? If like a camera flashes in your eyes and you're temporarily disoriented because of an afterimage, green glare doesn't, it has a lower chance of creating that afterimage effect. So, it's considered a less impactful glare.
Will the solar panels be designed with anti-reflective coating?
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
And should we expect these panels to generate heat?
No.
Have you identified whether there is a planted subdivision immediately adjacent to the project's property line that would necessitate the visual screening standards of the ordinance?
No, we have not identified any planted subdivisions.
Does this project have any plans for outdoor storage?
We would anticipate, no permanent outdoor storage. We would anticipate temporary storage during construction within the development area.
And you said during your presentation that construction typically would last within 12 months, correct?
Yeah, that, the 12-months duration is what we've seen from mobilization to site to commercial operation. That would include their initial site preparation where we're putting in place erosion control measures, establishing our driveway, putting up a fence, some of the lower, you know, impactful activities. And then, as I described, we typically see the actual construction of the array to take about three months. So, during that time, obviously, or just prior to that time, isn't, we would have material delivery to site and we would anticipate storing that material in like a 40-foot Conex box that would be located within the development area.
Can you say that word again? What box?
A Conex.
C-O-N-E-X?
Correct, C-O-N-E-X. And that temporary storage is to ensure security of the smaller pieces of equipment that would be delivered to site.
Did you, the applicant, host a community meeting for this proposed project?
Yes, we did. I did.
Do you recall when that meeting took place?
I do have it here. That was in the evening of August 18th, 2022, and that was here at the Old Lee County Courthouse in the committee room.
Do you recall how many attendees showed up at that meeting?
That meeting was attended by two individuals in addition to myself.
And at that meeting, did you present a site plan for the proposed project?
I did present a site plan for this project. No comments were provided by the attendees on the Crawford 1 or Crawford 1A project.
With the community meeting, did you also notify all adjacent landowners within 1,000 feet of the project?
Yes, we did.
Is there a site plan included within your submitted application?
Yes, there is.
What about the planned location of lines connecting the solar energy system to the, to a building, substation or other electric load? Are they included in the application?
Yes, the location of the underground medium voltage lines that would connect the project to the grid are depicted, and then also the poles that I described previously for, both the utilities' poles and the project side poles are depicted on the site plan.
And you talked about a landscaping plan that, that's in the application?
So, the landscaping buffer is shown as proposed. We would, we would endeavor to follow the ordinance, which is to, we've provided the screening in the northwest portion of the project only. There is a non-participating dwelling approximately 800 feet northwest of the project. That's, and that's where we've presented screening in our proposed site plan. We would also expect, and we have been attempting to engage that non-participating dwelling, the landowner, to discuss the vegetative screening options under the ordinance and present a one-time payment if desired by that abutter.
Have you submitted manufacturer specifications in the application?
We have included a solar panel specification and a single-axis tracker specification in the application. I will say, I'll make a couple of comments on, on the equipment. The solar panel itself, that panel that's been included in the application, Summit Ridge Energy has a long-term procurement plan in place with the manufacturer of that module. So, we do, we would fully expect that to be the module utilized on the project. I will say, as I'm sure everyone's aware with respect to supply chain, we have seen single-axis tracker availability and inverter availability change approximately every six months. So, we, we can propose equipment, you know, any, any equipment would need to meet our standards and, and would be, you know, fully compliant with the, you know, National Electric Code and UL listings, right, for, for solar equipment.
And have you, on behalf of the applicant, submitted an interconnection application with ComEd?
Yes. So, both Crawford 1, Crawford Solar 1 LLC and Crawford Solar 1A LLC have active interconnection applications, I shouldn't say applications, they have active agreements, executed agreements with ComEd.
Are there any particular identifiable fire or explosion hazards associated with the construction or operation of this project?
No, the, the risks for fire explosions are typical of any sort of electrical infrastructure. The, there's nothing unique that's being proposed in these projects. With respect to like explosive hazards, one example could be if there was a battery or some sort of stored fuel on site. None of that is being proposed at this project, for this project. And then, in terms of, yeah, long-term risks of, of fire, again, is typical of any sort of electrical infrastructure. And we don't see any elevated risk there.
Have you also submitted a fire protection plan?
We have not yet submitted a fire protection plan. We have a proposed approach to that coordination and would expect to conduct that prior to issuance of a building permit.
Will the project be located, designed, constructed and operated so as to avoid and mitigate any impact to wildlife?
Yes, so we screen extensively for impacts to wildlife. And if, if there is an anticipated impact, we would employ mitigating measures, but these sites, as reviewed via our consultations, we do not impact that, we don't anticipate that there would be any impact to wildlife because of these developments. The site is actively farmed and following construction, we would be, there would be very minimal land disturbance. So, we expect actually, long-term, the site would, at least, you know, for the operation of the site, it should be beneficial to wildlife.
And you did say that you did, you will agree You will agree to enter into road use agreement with the county and any impacted townships, if necessary?
Yes. Fully expect to go through that process. I've begun outreach to the county engineer with respect to use of local roads, and then the next step will be coordination with the highway commissioner.
Are you familiar with the consultation fund requirement in the ordinance regarding solar systems?
Yes.
Solar energy systems, sorry. And you understand that the Lee County engineer sets that amount?
Yes.
Okay. Does the applicant intend to enter into an agricultural impact mitigation agreement, or what we refer to as the AMA with the State of Illinois concerning this project?
Yes, absolutely. We have not yet entered into an AMA for either the Crawford 1 solar project or the Crawford 1A solar project. But in every case, Summit Ridge currently has executed, entered into those agreements and reviewed those obligations, the AMA obligations with the landowner, with the county, and with the Department of Agriculture on every single one of our sites, and we would expect to do the same on these projects.
With respect to the ordinance provisions governing stormwater management, retention of topsoil, and minimized disturbance to prime farmland, does the applicant agree to abide by all those requirements as set forth in the Lee County ordinance?
Yes, absolutely.
Has a stormwater management plan been developed?
No, a stormwater management plan has not yet been developed. That would be developed as part of the detailed site development plan by our civil engineering group. And again, our civil engineering group is licensed in the state of Illinois as a professional engineer and a designated SWIP or Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan manager. So they're registered to manage those plans in the state of Illinois as well. And so that would be prepared by Summit Ridge closer to application for the building permits.
Under the AMA, you're required to map the drainage patterns with GPS technology prior to the start of construction. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And you commit to doing so in this case as well, correct?
Yes. So we perform a drain tile survey, and we do prepare a stormwater drainage plan based on the topography of the site. We do have one-foot design-level topo already for this, for both the Crawford 1 solar project and the Crawford 1A solar project. And then, our civil engineering group would prepare the flowage across the site based on that one-foot topo, and then also incorporate any considerations from the drain tile survey.
Does the applicant commit to repairing and restoring all drainage tiles damaged during construction and deconstruction of the project?
Yes.
If there would be drainage tile damage within, what timeframe would you... Would the damaged tile be repaired?
I'll say it's typically within 30 days. For... The repairs are conducted in coordination with the landowner. So depending on the severity of the issue posed by the damaged tile, we have... There have been other timelines agreed to. That's per the AMA. It's required within a timeframe in agreement with the landowner. So we do conduct that in coordination with the landowner, any repairs. But again, it's typically within 30 days.
Have you submitted a weed and grass management plan in the application?
Yes, there is a vegetative maintenance plan in the application. I'll say near-term maintenance is typically mechanical in nature when we're trying to establish our native prairie pollinator mix. And then, the plan does get updated. We work with a consultant that the first three years of the site operation essentially, post-construction, are most critical, right, for establishing that native pollinator mix. So we have our consultant engaged continuously for those three years, and we update the plan accordingly based on the performance of the site.
And will any topsoil be removed from the site?
No. No. And the only topsoil, like that... Obviously, we'll have a detailed civil grading plan for the site as necessary. As I've presented, the intent is to not... To minimize grading. We really... That's not... Moving dirt is not something that we would, you know... We try to avoid. But the road, installation of the road, does require scraping of some topsoil and then compaction of the native soil underneath, and then a built-up gravel road is what's presented in our design, our design standard. But that topsoil that has been scraped is used to stabilize the shoulders of the road. So it remains on-site. We commit to not removing any topsoil.
Does the applicant agree to abide by the operational standard conditions as set forth in the Lee County ordinance?
Yes.
How about the repowering provision in our ordinance?
Yes.
And decommissioning requirements as well?
Yes.
Does the applicant agree to carry general liability insurance as set forth in the ordinance for Lee County?
Yes, we do.
Will there be any communication interference associated with this project?
The equipment that is procured is all FCC, CFR, Part 47, Subpart B compliant, which basically regulates the allowable emissions, and that's the same standard that household electronics are developed to. So it's equivalent to construction of a residence in terms of new emissions introduced with respect to the solar energy system equipment. The power lines emit electromagnetic emissions, our frequencies, and so there's already existing three-phase power along the site. We would add a few three to five above-ground poles for the interconnection. There's been no specific study that we've performed, but it would be... The emissions kind of profile of the site would be typical of the existing infrastructure in the area.
If there was a complaint of any such interference, does the applicant commit to responding and mitigating the same as required by the Lee County ordinance?
Yes, in accordance with the ordinance. And also, this is a question that comes up with our landowners as well, and we commit to no nuisance with the landowners. No, this would fall under that, a complaint due to emissions or whatever the source may be. We commit to addressing any nuisance that may be posed by the site.
And is the applicant contemplating the use of any battery storage in connection with this project?
No. So the site plan does not contemplate battery storage, and also, the interconnection agreement with ComEd does not contemplate battery storage.
If this petition for special use permit were approved and the project was constructed and operated, would that have any effect on area employment in your mind?
I can't commit to any specific labor contracts that might be put in place on this particular project. I will say, from a long-term maintenance perspective, our preference, if there is interest, is to contract with a local organization or individual to provide the long-term maintenance. I will comment, though, that the state of Illinois, under the Clean and Equitable Jobs Act, strongly encourages working with local labor organizations, and also will be requiring an apprenticeship program on these projects moving forward. So I think there will be opportunities for local labor engagement. It's the... There are no contracts in place for these projects at this time, so I can't comment on specifics. But I think that, under the state requirements, we will be required to meet certain labor requirements which would encourage local labor participation.
Would the operation of this project create or cause any vibration?
Not the operation. As I mentioned, for the construction activities, this is a driven pile foundation. So during that approximately two-week period, that would... Local to the project or within the project footprint, you would expect there to be a vibration during installation of that driven pile.
Would there be any particle emission from the proposed project?
No.
What about during construction?
Yeah, during construction, typical, again, grading and our pile-driving equipment and semi-truck deliveries to the site, there would be emissions associated with the operation of those vehicles.
Should we expect there to be any odor emanating from this project during operations?
No, not during operations.
How about during construction?
And during construction, there would be anything that's a byproduct of typical construction activities.
And would the construction or operation of this project involve the use of any explosive or particularly flammable materials?
No.
In the application, did you note or show any existing pipelines or utilities?
Not in the application. We have since performed an ALTA survey for the site, which requires... Our standard, survey standard, requires the identification of any local utilities, especially buried. And we have not located any within the development area for the project.
What kind of survey... Excuse me for interrupting, Ms. Hinkle. What kind of survey did you say?
ALTA. A-L-T-A.
Sorry to interrupt.
Is there presently an engineering certificate that the foundation and the design of the solar panels is within acceptable professional standards?
There's not presently a detailed structural design for the mounting of the panels. That would be prepared following a geotechnical investigation of the site, which is yet to be performed. But that the foundation design, both for the driven piles, the embedment depth of the driven piles, and for the equipment pads, would be designed by a licensed professional engineer in accordance with that geotechnical investigation. And then, that would be... That would provide, like, the certification for the foundation design. But that has not yet occurred for this, for either of these projects.
Does the applicant commit or intend to use industry-best practices with respect to this project?
Yes. As I noted during my presentation, Summit Ridge Energy is the owner-operator of the project, and also, we work with investors to... We sponsor the projects and work with investors to bring in the capital to construct and for the long-term operation of the project. And both ourselves, as owner-operators, have development standards and construction standards that are in line with best practices or driving best practices in the industry, and also we're held to those standards by our investors.
Does the applicant understand that under Section 102A3 of the Lee County Code, the zoning administrator will revoke and approve special use permit if a building permit has not been secured within three years from the date of the special use was granted?
Yes.
And does the applicant intend to comply with the requirements set forth in the Lee County ordinance regulating solar energy systems?
Yes, we do.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. How about you, Ms. Hinkle?
Is Summit Ridge willing to provide the certification for the foundations prior to the issuance of building permits?
Yes, absolutely.
With regard to the screening, you referenced the property adjacent to the west of the proposed site. What about the property to the southwest, identified as the owner as Ethan Cox?
So we have not proposed screening in the southwest corner of the site in coordination with our landowner, because the landowner would like continued farm equipment access to the southern portion of the parcel. And so, to provide that corridor for access, we have not proposed landscaping in that southwest corner of the project, of the Crawford 1 solar project. So the intent there is depicted on the site plan, and I think, I believe we have a call-out for it on the plan, is to ensure landowner access to the southern portion of their field. We also believe that there's natural screening in the topography of the adjacent site that prevents any abutter to the south or southwest of the project from viewing the project due to the existing Red Brick Road crossing over I-88 and the existence of I-88.
Is Mr. Cox a participant or a non-participant?
Non-participant.
Okay. Then are you aware that the ordinance does call for adjacent non-participating dwellings to be screened?
Yes.
Okay. Was a LISA done on the property?
My understanding from contacting the soil and Water Conservation District for Lee County is that a LISA score was prepared back in 2018, and that score remained valid.
Do you know the score?
I don't. I have requested the score, and I was told that it has been provided to the zoning office. I don't have the score.
Do you know the productivity index for the parcel?
I do not.
Has an AMA been signed with the Department of Ag as of yet?
No, we have not yet executed the AMA. One reason why we haven't is because acreage is required as an input to that AMA, which will be a value that's finalized following this process, the special use process.
Will a signed AMA be provided before the issuance of any building permits?
Yes.
That is all I have.
Okay. How about you, Mr. Forster?
No questions.
How about you, Mr. Hughes?
Yes. I did have several, but about five or six of those have been eliminated by the prior First one I have is regarding the variance that you've requested. You have, as I'm understanding, those lines will be strung two feet above the ground, correct?
That's correct.
How does that impact access between the rows?
So there's perimeter access around the array. So for mowing, for example, or any sort of vegetative maintenance within the array, the individual performing that activity would need to access those rows from both the north and the south. So it does impede direct access across, I guess, north-south along the tracker. But that's... But we've accounted for that in the layout.
Will you be providing onsite education or direction to emergency responders within the site as part of your emergency plan?
Yes. So we encourage and invite any emergency responders to come tour the site, both during construction and prior to operation, to ensure they're familiar with activities during construction, and then the final configuration of the site. and then the final configuration of the site.
Okay. Following up on one of Alice's questions, you indicated that the non-participant to the, I believe, the northeast, or, excuse me, northwest, was about 800, the dwelling was about 800 feet from the site. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The dwelling to the southwest of the site, do you know approximately how far?
I believe it's, I believe it's right at 1,000 feet. I don't know. I would need to go measure that exactly. But I believe their property fell within the 1,000-foot notification requirement. But I would need to check the dimension or the distance to the dwelling itself.
Okay. And is there a rise, I believe there is a rise in the Red Brick Road as it goes over the interstate? Is that correct?
That's correct. Traveling north on Red Brick Road from south of I-88, there's a rise in the road. So that dwelling is located on the west side of the road. The project is located on the east side of the road. And so, as you travel north on Red Brick Road, you, there's a rise in the road as you travel over the interstate, which then it drops down again to the field where the proposed project is located.
So can you see that dwelling from the perimeter of the site, of the development site?
I would need to verify that. I don't, I don't believe you can see it, but I would, I think we should verify that. And I'd like to say that, I mean, understanding the requirements of the ordinance, again, we've, the lack of screening provided in that southwest corner was at the request of our landowner. I think we can make, we can review that with the landowner if we need to make accommodations otherwise. You know, we would be prepared to review a one-time payment for any abutter that might feel like the visual aesthetic is impacted by the project. But I think we should follow up, and Summit Ridge should follow up and verify visibility for that particular property.
Okay, thank you. In your application, the vegetative maintenance plan, a pollinator mix was not addressed, is that correct?
In the application?
Yeah.
I think the application originally just spoke more generically about the ground cover within the array. That being said, the Summit Ridge standard is to deploy a native prairie pollinator mix. And we are actively working with a consultant for preparation of that mix for this and other projects.
And as I recall, you indicated there would be expected, at this point, to be three different species and for three, three different periods of the seasons. So you, is that correct?
Yeah, the mix itself is actually, it's a mixture of 16 different species, four grasses, and then nine, I guess that doesn't add up to 16. I think it's 13 then. It's nine different native wildflower plants and four different native prairie grasses.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm that. I, as I believe your testimony indicated that, but I just wanted to confirm it since it wasn't in the application.
Yes.
Setbacks were not addressed, but was that because of the distance from the non-participating?
The site plans as presented comply with the county setback requirements for front yard setbacks off of public roadways and side yard setbacks. There's, and we're not requesting any variances per the county ordinance requirements.
All right. Is the only, going back to the variances, the only reason for the request of the variance, the cost of of putting those lines underground?
Well, it's the, it's the cost of trenching, of course. It's also a long-term operational cost of maintaining lines. Obviously, if you have a buried line, it's more expensive to repair. If you have a failure, if you need to replace a line. And so, if it's above ground, that is obviously more accessible and therefore easier to maintain for the life of the project.
Will that two-foot hanging blind cable between the arrays be visible from off the site?
I imagine if you are standing at the fence line, that you would be able to see that. It would be, yeah, it would be visible.
Okay. Believe that's balancing my questions.
Okay, Mr. Meyer?
Could you explain why the projects weren't built under the original board approval in 2018?
Yes. So the community solar, as introduced in 2016 in Illinois, and then what resulted in the Adjustable Block Program that was opened for application in January, I believe, January or February of 2019. These projects were included in that initial submission. So they're, to be eligible for the program, you're required to have all of your discretionary approvals to be an eligible project for application. That's what drove the initial presentation and development of the project back in 2018, to be prepared for that initial opening of the program. These projects, that initial opening of the program was, projects were awarded capacity on a lottery system. That was also established, the fact that it was going to be a lottery system was established later after the development of the projects. But that's how, that's how an oversubscription of the program was addressed at the state level. These projects were not awarded capacity. Subsequently, when there was a second round of the program, earlier, it was really late 2021, and then capacity allocations were allocated to the developers in early 2022. Most projects that moved forward at that, at that point, developers had discretion as to which projects they wanted to allocate capacity to. These projects were no longer eligible, though, because the special use, special uses had expired. And at the time, there wasn't a path to extend the special use for these projects. So Summit Ridge Energy, for our self-developed projects that we had, those projects we allocated capacity to, we were unable to allocate any capacity to these projects at the time. We do anticipate, for two reasons, that we can move these projects forward at this juncture. One is, there's growing capacity in the program. One of the opening deadlines was today, November 1st. These projects were not eligible for those because they do not have valid special-use permits. There is another program opening early next year. It's, actually, it's June 1st, so, yeah, late spring next year. So we would hope, you know, pending approval of the project, that these projects would be eligible for that program opening. However, there's also, we also believe at Summit Ridge that there's going to be, now there are paths, commercial paths forward for these projects, both in and out of the state program. So you can, you can operate as a community solar project in the state of Illinois per the utility tariff. You do not need to be operating under the program administered by the Illinois Power Agency. And so, we would anticipate, given the amount of, obviously, time and investment into these sites, and also, a key element is that interconnection agreement that we have in place for both projects, that, you know, we are encouraged to move development forward for these projects. And we see multiple opportunities to do that now. And we believe that they won't be impacted by the type of risk and uncertainty that was put in place following permitting of these projects four years ago. So again, so we're here, or I'm here tonight to present the projects because we do believe that we have a path forward to build these projects. And a lot of the factors that prevented them from being built the first time around have been removed.
Can you explain why it's two, two-megawatt projects instead of one four-megawatt project?
Yes. I mean, that, that's a historical, sort of an artifact of the community solar program that was, that's administered by the state. So as projects were originally, projects to be eligible as community solar in the state of Illinois were originally capped at two megawatts AC output. These projects were originally developed at two-megawatt AC because of that program cap. That cap has now been raised to five megawatts AC. However, you know, the, again, these projects were previously reviewed and approved at two megawatts each. And we have active interconnection agreements at two megawatts AC, which is important. So rather than re-studying the projects at five, or can't, terminating one interconnection agreement and then re-studying a single larger project, we believe that, obviously, as developers, that there's value in maintaining the two-megawatt project size.
Are the panels going to be bifacial?
Yes. The modules, as proposed in the layout, are 580-watt bifacial modules.
I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I had 60-some questions to start with. Now, out of fairness, probably 90% of them are taken care of. However, reaching the two hours, Mr. Bookberger owes us a couple things. And I know Ms. Duffy wants to testify, so I think we still need tomorrow night. Maybe quick, but rather than me paw through all my questions, deciding which ones to ask. Unless you guys want to keep, I can see you looking at each other. Want to waive the two-and-a-half hours and?
He's not going to be here tomorrow.
I am concerned with quorum. I reached out to Craig saying I definitely need you tomorrow, but if.
All right. Okay. Gentlemen, unanimous consent to waive your two-and-a-half hours?
Well, the only, the only thing I'm questioning now is how much additional time we do need tonight if we, if we go further.
Probably another half hour, I guess.
Either way.
Yeah, since there's a question of quorum.
That's the, Ms. Duffy's right, that's a problem.
I will be here on time tomorrow. Still alive.
All right, here we go. The equipment pad that you mentioned, is that concrete?
Yes.
The screening buffer, first of all, before I forget, do you understand that that's a Lee County ordinance requirement for adjacent non-participating landowners within 1,000 feet? So it matters not that you've agreed with the landowner. You got to comply with the ordinance. Do you understand that?
Yes, I do.
And if the owner says no, then I guess you're at an impasse and can't get the special-use permit. Do you understand that?
My understanding is that if the landowner fails to select an option for screening, that we are still obligated to present a one-time payment for the value of that, of that screening, and that we would have to proceed with that payment.
Okay, fair enough.
And that, that non-participating dwelling landowner would have the option to process or accept that payment or not.
Okay, fair enough. The, the landowner in the northwest corner, you said you'd reached out to him. Has there been any further communication?
No, but I will continue to reach out.
Took care of that, took care of that. Would there be any noxious material produced, including human waste during construction?
Noxious emissions would come from operation of the construction vehicles.
How would human waste be taken care of?
That would be from portable facilities that would be maintained.
Commonly known as porta-potties.
Porta-jans, porta-potties, that would be maintained and removed at the end of construction.
What, how would you do a drain tile survey?
We work with a preferred surveyor. And that survey would be conducted in coordination with the landowner to ensure that we minimize any impact, success of the survey and any impact on their farming operations.
You often, during your testimony, say, "We do, we usually do," or "we do this." Can that be always interpreted as "we will"? And don't take this the wrong way, but, and I understand the marketing reasons you may want to say it that way. But the county board and the zoning board should be concerned with what you "will" do in this case. When you say "we usually do," does that mean you "will" do in this case?
Yes. When I say "we will" or "we usually do," what I'm, what I'm attempting to convey or communicate is that that is how we will execute these projects.
How about, back to the drain tile survey, will you contact local drainage district?
Yes.
What was the, you said that FAA has a new screening tool, but you did not say what it is. What is the name of that tool?
The, I would need to check my notes.
Sure.
It's, it's referred to as the FAA Obstruction Screening Tool.
Obstruction?
Obstruction Screening Tool.
Do you have written results of that screening tool?
Yes.
Have you marked that as, is it in, is it in your application?
So the.
Is it in your application?
Yes, yes.
Okay. The signage posted at the site, will that be ANSI, OSHA, and any National Electric Safety Code compliant?
Yes, it will be, the sign will be prepared in accordance with the county ordinance and also in coordination with the emergency responders to ensure all required and necessary information is on the sign.
Do you know the, the amount of tax revenue that this project will produce?
We would work with the county assessor to determine the actual.
My question is just, do you know?
We do not know, I do not know the exact value. I would estimate $11,000 in first-year tax revenue from one of the 2-megawatt solar projects.
You indicated there would be enough power produced to power, plus or minus, 700 homes. Is that from both Crawford 1A, 1 and 1A, or is that from one of them?
That is from both Crawford 1 and Crawford 1A.
The panels, at their max, at their lowest tilt, how high are they off the ground?
At their lowest tilt, when, if I may ask a question?
Sure.
Are you indicating at their, at zero tilt, when the panels are flat?
At their lowest point off, any frame, part of the frame, its lowest point off the ground, how high is that?
That's approximately 10 feet.
Okay. At its maximum tilt, how high?
So I might need to correct my previous answer. When the modules are flat, they're approximately seven feet off the ground. And when they're at maximum tilt, they're approximately 10 feet off the ground, the top edge of the module.
Do you know the angle of that maximum tilt to vertical?
It will be dependent on the final single-assess tracker design. It will be either 55 degrees or 60 degrees.
Between 55 and 60 degrees, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. You said you don't anticipate security cameras. Does that mean you are committing to not having security cameras unless during construction there's a theft? Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
You said there is, you do not design with permanent lighting. How about in this proposed, these proposed SESs, will there be any permanent lighting?
No.
The green glare that might shine on I-88, you said, I think you used the word temporary. What did you mean by that?
The glare study calculates a total, total annual amount of time that glare would be present. It doesn't identify the specific times that that glare is present or the duration that that glare is present, but it does calculate a total annual time. And I believe the total, if I recall from our application, the total time that green glare would be present at the two vertices identified in the study, it's a total of less than 10 minutes annually.
So rather than, that glare study was tough for an engineer to read. So 10 minutes annually, gross. Instead of the word temporary, would intermittent be better description? Intermittent over 10, 10 intermittent minutes over a year?
Yes, I believe that that's correct.
You indicated you had manufacturer specs for solar panels and the tracker system and that they might change depending on supply chain. How about manufacturer specs for transformers and inverters? Have you submitted those?
We have not submitted specifications for the inverter or the medium voltage step-up transformer.
And when will you do that?
We would, we will submit those specifications as part of our building permit application.
Said there would not be any communication interference and you suggested it was because the engineering specs for the equipment were equivalent to that in a household. Can you expand on that a little bit? What does that mean?
Yes, so the equipment that is procured, the electronic equipment that's procured has been certified to FCC CFR Part 47 Subpart B, which is the portion of the federal code that regulates emissions from electronics equipment.
Not the SEC, the FEC, right?
FCC.
FCC, that's what you said, okay, thank you. But you haven't had a study, is that correct?
No, no study has been performed, but the equipment is procured with those certifications.
Okay, thank you. Setbacks with, well, does the site plan conform to road setbacks, meaning interstates, state, and county and township roads?
Yes, it does.
Dimensions of the panels, length, width, and...
The dimension, the dimension of the panels are shown in our application and on our site plan.
I didn't see it. I mean, they're eight feet long by three feet wide by five inches thick, or is that shown in there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And to clarify, in the application, the panel module data sheet is included.
Okay.
I believe they're approximately four feet by eight feet.
How deep would the support pilings be driven into the ground?
That would be dependent on the geotechnical study for the site. A typical embedment is 10 feet.
Could you, in good faith, estimate what the minimum and what the maximum would be?
In good faith, my estimate would be a minimum of 10 feet and a maximum of 14 feet.
The lines that are above ground, first of all, are they only collection, energy collection lines or are there communication lines as well?
With respect to the above-ground lines, only energy lines are above ground. For, sorry to clarify.
No, that's right.
For connection to the grid. We've also presented a variance request for DC electrical lines that would be above ground.
How about communication lines? Are there any running between the panels or the end of the panels?
No. Not in our design. All of our communication components are centrally located.
The composition of the access road would be what?
Would be a built-up gravel road.
Any permanent structures on the development area? I think you answered that and I apologize, but... Any permanent structures on the development area?
The permanent structures would consist of the solar energy system equipment.
Besides the electrical equipment, fair enough.
No additional structures proposed.
You said there'd be temporary structures, that would be those boxes you talked about. I can't remember the name of it. Would there be any other temporary structures during construction?
No other temporary, no other temporary structures.
No staging area?
There would be temporary staging area, like a lay-down area where equipment would be placed, but not in a structure associated with that equipment.
Fair enough. Would there be one for each Crawford or just one lay-down?
That would depend on if both projects were constructed at the same time. But I would anticipate, the projects would utilize area within the development area of each project for temporary lay-down and storage of material.
Will both Crawford LLC entities adhere to not only local, state, and federal rules, but industry rules and regulations regarding the type of construction you are proposing?
Yes, they will.
Will you adhere to the National Electric Safety Code?
Yes.
You said the fence, the perimeter fence would be, and I kind of lost you. You showed six feet, is that correct, and it would be chain link?
National Electric Safety Code requires a six-foot fence. Our proposed fence in our site plan is a seven-foot fence, chain link fence.
But you said six feet. Is that a minimum or that was a misstatement, which is fine, eh?
It's a, the application notes that a minimum of a six-foot fence is required to meet code.
Well, but yours would be seven feet?
That's correct.
Chain link?
Yes.
And you meet the setbacks from any non-participating owner's property line, correct?
That's correct, yes.
If you know, and you may not, during construction, how many truck, round trip, truck trips would there be? Say that real fast.
I do not know at this time. We, that information is provided by our contractor.
When you held the community meeting, did you notify members of Lee County Board, the South Dixon Township Board, and the staff of Lee County Zoning and Planning?
We notified the staff of Lee County Zoning and Planning and residents within 1,000 feet of the project. There was no formal notification sent to members of the board.
Or either board, South Dixon Township or County?
That's correct, either board.
Other than the site, oh, never mind. Do you have a topograph, or have you provided a topographical map at two-foot intervals?
We have not provided that map. We do have it. That survey was performed in mid-October, following harvesting of the site.
Have you provided a map showing the type and percentage coverage of existing vegetation within the development area?
We have not provided a map showing existing coverage, but the site is, has historically been 100%, sorry, the development area has been 100% planted with corn.
Yep, are you confident that any maps you produced show existing waterways?
Yes.
Have you, have you a, have you provided or do you have a mapped Lee County soil survey of the development area?
Yes, that's included in the application.
But no map that you've provided yet shows the surface water drainage patterns, is that correct?
That's correct. The surface water drainage pattern map will be prepared based on the one-foot topo, that map that we now have as of October 14th.
By when? By when will?
We would, we would prepare that drainage pattern map prior to the beginning of coordination with the county for, to acquire our building permits. So in coordination for the preparation of our final grading plan for the site, that map would be prepared and reviewed.
The ordinance requires, never mind, I take that, I'll withdraw that. Are there any municipalities within a mile and a half of either Crawford 1 or Crawford 1A?
Yes, the project is within one and a half miles of the city of Dixon.
And have you notified then the city of Dixon?
Yes.
And have you received any response from the city of Dixon regarding its position on the matter?
Yes, the city responded that they had no comment.
That they, I'm sorry, just...
They had no comments or questions regarding the project.
And how did they make that response?
Via email.
You have a copy of that email?
Yes.
Have you included that in your application?
No.
Are you going to?
Yes, I will.
Is any of the development area prime farmland?
I have not received the LECA score for the site, so I do not know the answer to that question.
Would the operation of the project produce any electromagnetic fields?
We have not performed a study to determine if it will produce electromagnetic fields. However, the equipment is procured with certifications that ensure, limit, that any emissions are limited and within federal guidelines.
For electromagnetic fields?
That's correct, for electromagnetic emissions.
Almost done. Almost done. What, if any, other community benefits might either Crawford LLC provide?
The primary benefit is the long-term tax revenue from the operation of the system. Beyond that, the project does offer, it is a community solar project. In this case, community is really defined as any electric distribution utility customer in the service area that the project is connected to, which in this case is the Commonwealth Edison Service Territory. So it does offer the ability to subscribe to the project for a discounted rate for your energy supply. And then additionally, I believe that the presence of the project does allow, you know, future, actually immediate benefits in terms of power quality on that circuit and long-term benefits in terms of resiliency of the power grid in the vicinity of the project.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions. You may step down. Oh, you may not. Any interested parties left on Zoom? The person or people that are watching this on Zoom, do you, do you have any questions of this witness? If you do so, either speak or hit the raise hand button, please. Seen anything? Give you just a few seconds here. Questions of this witness? Nothing? Okay, very good. Then you may step down. Reminder, you owe us a couple things as exhibits, the printout of your PowerPoint and something we just went over that I forgot.
The email evidence.
Good. Okay, thank you, you may step down. Ms. Duffy? Did you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truthful truth and nothing but the truth? Please, have a seat. Say your name, please.
Dee Duffy.
Business or occupation?
I'm the Lee County Zoning Administrator.
For how long?
Coming up December 1st, it'll be four years.
In that capacity, you're the keeper of records, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
And do you have some documents you want to introduce into evidence?
I do.
Go ahead.
I first want to introduce the Soil and Water Natural Resource Report.
And you marked that as exhibit what?
ZO1. And Bruce can, I've got some more.
Okay, next. Thank you, sir. I got it, I got it, I got it.
Next is our certificate of publication.
Okay, and that's ZO2?
ZO2.
From the Dixon Telegraph?
Yes, supporting the proof of that publication.
Okay. Thank you.
That's for both Crawford.
Anything else?
Um. This would be the continuance, the agenda from the initial.
I better just make that a little long, a little more. It's ZO3, but what is it more particularly?
That's the initial posting of the notice of this petition.
But was Crawford I and I-A even noticed for that day? The certificate of publication noticed it for what day? I got it, yeah, thanks.
September 17th is when it was posted in the newspaper?
No, no, but it was noticed, the hearing was noticed for what day?
I believe October 3rd.
Oh. Okay. Got it. So what ZO3 is, is a copy of an agenda that continued that hearing from October 3rd until when?
September, let's see.
That's not fair to you without looking at it.
Continued to October 6th. Posted September 22nd.
And then what happened on October 6th?
On October 6th, it was this petition, these two petitions were continued.
Until when?
Today. November 1st, 2022.
And this notice that's ZO number three was posted where?
Posted outside the old courthouse boardroom in the hallway and on the county website. And also posted at the site.
At the site?
Project, proposed project site.
And you said something else and I?
On the website?
A website, thank you. How about on the inside of the only public door to the courthouse?
No, just outside of the, in the hallway here on the third floor.
Was it published in the Telegraph?
Yes, the continuance, yes.
Do you have a certificate of that publication?
I do, but not right on me.
Okay. Can you get that and put it of record, please? Okay, not now, I mean, at some point. Okay, anything else?
Nothing that I can think of, no.
Questions of this witness, Mr. Boonstra?
No, sir, thank you.
Ms. Henkel?
Do you have the LECA score for the property?
It is in the resource report on the last page that I gave to the zoning board members, I believe. The total was 238.
And do you have the PI for the property?
I do. I don't believe it was put in the resource report in 2018. It's not in here. That's all.
Mr. Forster? Now's your chance. Mr. Hughes? Mr. Meyer?
No.
Thank you, you may step down.
Petitioner?
Petitioner?
Whoop. Questions of this witness? You're absolutely right.
None.
Interested parties? Questions of Ms. Duffy? I'll give you five, 10 seconds to hit the raise hand button or speak. Okay, you're free of cross-examination. Ms. Duffy, do wish to call any other witnesses? Ms. Henkel?
No.
Mr. Boonstra? Okay. Well, interested parties want to testify or present witnesses. Again, we see one interested part. Well, we're not sure exactly the status, but I assume it's an interested party on Zoom. I mean, if you want to participate, I really want to give you the chance. Participate meaning testify or present your own witness. I really want to give you the chance, but you got to let us know that that's what you want to do. No? Okay, well, then that closes the evidence. Very good. That means we can recess until December 5th, which is what day of the week, Monday? Think I had it for a Monday.
Monday.
I had everybody available then. Does that still look like the case, at least as far as the three of you are concerned?
For December 5th?
December 5th. Fact-finding and recommendation? I'll get you the stuff before that.
On December 5th, is that going to be findings of fact?
I just said.
Or is that going to be closing argument by petitioner? Anything he wants to do?
Boy, I'm going too fast. Mr. Buckberger, you have an opportunity to make any closing comments you want to make right now? Closing argument, public comment?
I have no additional comments at this time.
Okay. How about interested parties? Thank you very much, Mr. Boonstra. Interested party, you want to make any argument comments? Okay, then we are finished. Fact-finding and recommendation, December 5th, 6 o'clock?
Okay, that's.
That's sort of a question.
Yep.
6 o'clock, all right. December 5th, Monday, 6 o'clock. Be there, be square. Thank you, Kevin. Off the record.